Could be worse, I guess.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of January 21st, 2020?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The January 21st Journal is approved.
Madam Chair, I move to suspend the rules for the adoption and presentation of a resolution recognizing the University City Youth Football Team.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The rules are suspended.
Would you please read the resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution Number One, introduced by Councilmember Daze. Resolution: Whereas the Hit Squad Football Team was established as part of the University City Sports Association in 2008, competing in the JFL without a doubt as the most dominant, most successful, and all-around best team in the league after winning its third straight JFL Super Bowl Championship. And whereas, the Hit Squad's coaching staff teaches love, discipline, and respect for others, and aims for academic success for the team's players and cheerleaders, all qualities which are deserving of admiration by the people of St. Louis County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council congratulates the team members, cheerleaders, coaching staff, and all the supporters of the University City Sports Association Hit Squad Football Team on all it has accomplished, both on and off the gridiron, and expresses its certainty that success will follow long into the future. Section Two, the Acting Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Coach Jeff Jones, Sr., and the Hit Squad is a permanent testament to the Council's admiration and appreciation. Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number One.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
A roll call, excuse me.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, in Resolution One, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number One is adopted.
Madam Chair, may I ask the team to come forward so that I can make the presentation?
Absolutely.
And behalf of St. Louis County, the Pope, and all these wonderful young men and women, congratulations. Bring your cheese home and win tomorrow, um, Tuesday as well. All right. Thank you.
All right, well done. Moving right along. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, Item Number One, All Districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number Two, First District.
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Three, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare, County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through Item Number Five, and that will be the order.
Item Number Six.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Seven.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Eight.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number Nine.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number Ten, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number Eleven, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered.
Item Number Twelve, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Thirteen, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the change of honor be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Fourteen, Second District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item Number Fifteen.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number Sixteen.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number Seventeen.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number Eighteen.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Nineteen, Second District.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Twenty.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Twenty-One, Second District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item Number Twenty-Two.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number Twenty-Three.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number Twenty-Four, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Twenty-Five, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Twenty-Six, First District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the same motion through Twenty-Eight.
So ordered.
Item Number Twenty-Nine, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. There are no add-ons this evening, so we will proceed with the report of the County Executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. On Monday, the St. Louis Holocaust Museum announced a major expansion at its facility, a great way to commemorate its 25th year in St. Louis County. I was honored to be at the $18 million expansion of the museum, and I saw several council members there as well. It was a touching ceremony, as six Holocaust survivors lit six candles to commemorate the 6 million Jews who died during these atrocities. This important project addresses the fundamental issue of every generation, that of human rights and how we treat each other. Learning to embrace our differences and live together harmoniously is as important now as it has ever been. We have a civic responsibility to pass this critical experience to the next generation, so there is no repeat. The museum is a beacon of hope, and we're lucky to have it right here in St. Louis County. Earlier today, I visited Rittner High School, where I announced a new program to train young people for a career as emergency medical technicians through Abbott EMS. The Accelerated Apprenticeship Program offers an earn-as-you-learn opportunity for those interested in becoming EMTs. College is not the obvious path for all high school students. This new program provides high school students with a hands-on learning experience to begin their career immediately after graduation. We need to ensure that all students feel prepared for being an adult and for a professional career, whichever path they take. Workforce development and opportunities in St. Louis County are crucial to preparing our young adults for the future, and I appreciate the efforts of Abbott and Rittner High School in making this new program possible. Before the Council tonight is legislation that would ban domestic abusers from carrying concealed firearms. Just last week, there was a homicide in Fenton by a man whose wife had an order of protection against him. This is common sense legislation, and we must do what we can to reduce crime. One thing that we can do, we believe, under state law, is to ban abusers from carrying concealed firearms, and this will protect survivors of relationship violence. The new county legislation would bring our county ordinances in line with federal law, and I hope after I committee the whole on this important issue, we can have a new law in St. Louis County that show that we're doing all we can to stem the tide of violence. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Report to special committees.
Please hold on to your business.
And that will be the order. All right. We are now in the public forum portion of our agenda. This evening, we have 21 speakers. When you are called, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. We do have quite a few speakers tonight, so I want to remind everyone that we will be strictly adhering to our three-minute time limit. There is going to be a clock at the end of the dais here, and we will keep you on track. Please call the first speaker. First Speaker, Rachel Major.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rachel Major. I am a representative of the St. Louis County Police Department's police staff. The police staff, also referred to as the professional staff or the civilians, are a mix of some of the most critical working parts of the police department. Our mission as a whole is to support the police officers and our community. As the backbone of this police department, we stood together for Prop P. We were told, as the community was, that the taxes raised in that fund would support the entire police department. We found out quickly after its passing that not everyone in the police department was considered equal, and a separate labor contract for the police staff was needed. It's been more than 18 months since our negotiations began, and those 18 months, we have continued to be overlooked, ignored, and forgotten about by county government. We came to an agreement at the bargaining table in October, but it still has not been submitted to you. I'm proud to say that we stand before you with a ratified contract, and our police department and its officers are standing with us. The compensation within its pages are equitable to the proposal currently on your agenda for equipment, equipment that already has approved and budgeted funding within the police department's budget. So excuses of lack of funding for the police staff contract strike false. The police staff compensation agreement in our ratified contract is less than prosecuting attorney staff was allotted, half what justice services was allotted, and a paltry sum in comparison to the officers' needs. So consider these words in your discussions today as we continue to work through justifying our contract being worthy of your considerations. The reality of the situation is clear. If you want to allocate funds to compensate the police staff, you will find a way to do so, no differently than when nurses in dire need were given funds from Prop P instead of using the Health Department's budget. The police department believes the police staff has earned what was agreed upon, which is why they came to the agreement with us at a compensation rate they suggested. Prop P is the police department's money, and the community behind that fund agrees. I can only hope that when the time comes, you all will do so as well. Please, ladies and gentlemen, support the entire police department. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Next Speaker, Isora Liggins.
Good evening. I again ask that the County Counselor's Office withdraw from the matter of Liggins versus McGee and allow Mr. McGee the opportunity to either represent himself or retain counsel at his own expense and not the expense of the county taxpayers. Last week, my concern was the County Counselor's Office insisting on going before a judge and waiting months for a judge to be assigned instead of trying to resolve this matter. I received a new court date and a new judge. His public information reveals he has worked for St. Louis County Counselor's Office. He has worked for Evans &amp; Dixon, the firm who handled my employer's worker compensation claim. He worked for the Division of Workers' Compensation as administrative law judge and has ties with the administrative law judge Lee B. Schaefer. I filed a complaint against Judge Schaefer for exporté communications with Evans &amp; Dixon. Among other unethical diab... uh, I'm sorry. Among other unethical behavior, I am currently waiting on a decision regarding her complaint. It is hard to believe Judge can be impartial and free from bias under these circumstances. It is hard to believe it would take five months to assign a judge, and this would be his bio. It is not that I like to echo Dred Scott's Supreme Court majority decision of 1857, that Scott was black and was not a citizen and therefore had no right to sue, and went on to say, believed that blacks had no rights in which the white man was bound to respect. I have a duty to fight for my rights, and I have a duty to win. Discipline, disciplining Mr. McGee, giving me a deserved apology, and proceeding on to investigate my charges would have seemed to be the reasonable solution. I and others who have attempted to help me have openly been discriminated against. I again urge the County Committee to come together and look at taking a more progressive legislative approach to how the racial divide will be structured to bring equality and equity to all. Ongoing education in the area of judicial administration would be a good place to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Speaker, Maggie Bick.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Bick, and I live at 219 Longview Boulevard in Kirkwood. And I am here to speak in favor of the resolution recognizing the significance of the March for Life and honoring the work of pro-life community in their life-affirming mission. Every year since 1976, Missouri Right to Lives, Missouri Life Caravan, has traveled on buses leaving throughout the St. Louis area and on other buses from around the state of Missouri to the March for Life in Washington, DC. We, a bunch of us all just came back from there. And since 1974, the St. Louis County Pro-Life Community has traveled by car, van, airplane to the March for Life. The Missouri Life Caravan participation in the March for Life has always been a pilgrimage of ordinary people gathering together to tell our government leaders and our nation that abortion must end. In the early years of the march, the St. Louis County Pro-Life Community traveled the farthest, 819.7 miles approximately, one way. That's 13 hours and 28 minutes with no traffic and no snow. Some of our pilgrims have been going on this trip for more than 30 years. We travel on a motor coach, sleeping through the night. We arrive before dawn, attend church services, have breakfast, attend our Missouri federal legislators' meeting, participate in the March for Life, visit our Missouri federal legislators' offices, have dinner, and then get back on our buses that night at 7:00 PM. We ride back in St. Louis around noon the following day. We do this each year because we are committed to the protection of life from inception to natural death, to speak for the youngest and most vulnerable human beings. We do this out of respect for all human life, including those who do not agree with our pilgrimage's purpose. The March for Life is the largest, longest-running peaceful protest in the history of the United States, and I would really like your consideration of this resolution. Thank you.
Next Speaker, Steve Rupp.
Thank you. My name is Steve Rupp, and I live at 1675 Queens Drive in Florson. Anybody that's been up there? Great area. And I just, I just came here. I don't have any prepared notes. I just wanted to thank Councilman Harder for introducing this resolution to recognize people that have been marching peacefully and prayerfully in Washington, DC for all of these years. We had 3,000 people go from St. Louis this year, and, and we, it's, and she said, "We sleep on the bus?" No, we don't. You don't sleep on a bus. It's impossible. Your knees are up in your throat, and your back is killing you, but you do it because we're celebrating life. Every single one of us have been given the awesome gift of life. Every one of us has a purpose in life, and we're just trying to pass that on to the next generation and the next generation, to celebrate the gift of life that we've all been given. And we do that by peacefully and prayerfully going up to Washington, DC every year and, and marching on behalf of the children in the womb who don't have a voice. And we were all that child in the womb at one time, every single one of us. So we're here to ask you to consider voting yes on this resolution. Again, I want to thank Councilman Harder for introducing the, or the resolution, and we stand with life, and we celebrate the awesome gift of life. Isn't it great? Thank you. God bless you all.
Next Speaker, Kevin Kilpatrick.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Kilpatrick from Eureka, Missouri, 811 Williams Drive. I spoke to you last week regarding my floodplain property and the floodplain legislation that you're going to vote on tonight. I told you last week that my hobby farm was about six-plus feet underwater. We have resumed our operations with our maple syrup. We're at about 60% operation level right now, which is pretty good. The cleanup's going to continue for several months from this recent flood, but that's going to be done at a whopping cost of $0.00 to taxpayers, no insurance involved, and that's because we never developed the property, which to me is really good use of floodplain. This hobby farm is only 15.17 acres. Doesn't sound like a large piece of property, but it's done a tremendous job. Just a week and a half ago, we stored for free 30 million-plus gallons of floodwater. In 2015, in 2017, we stored nearly 130 million gallons of floodwater, and that's really a tremendous value to everybody. Flood storage is incredibly important. What concerns me is property to my east, about a half mile from my house, there's about 1,000 acres in unincorporated St. Louis County that is floodplain and would be subject to this legislation. Only three feet of water over that 1,000 acres equals a billion gallons of flood storage. It's incredibly significant. What you're doing tonight is incredibly significant and historic, in my opinion, and we're going to join our good neighbors in Jefferson County for being leaders in floodplain management. Speaking of floodplain management, I went to a meeting last night in Eureka that was hosted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. It was about thinking regionally and the different actions that we can take as communities to make floodplains work better and to make flooding less of a hazard, and one of their suggestions is exactly what you're voting on tonight, and that is to take action by making tighter ordinances, better restrictions on floodplain. And so, right now, we are at the minimum standards that the state and federal government allow, which is a one-foot elevation, meaning that we're allowed to have developments that create a flood surcharge of one foot, and tonight, we're talking about making it one inch, which is a leap forward in progressive forward-thinking. I thank you for your time, and I beg for your passage of this bill tonight. Thank you very much.
Next Speaker, Chris Strachoff.
My name is Chris Strachoff, and I live at 10448 Gregory Court, St. Louis, Missouri, 63128 South County. I am here this evening to discuss Bill 320, known as the vagrancy code, sponsored by Lisa Clancy, which only affects unincorporated St. Louis County. The bill will not apply to the district Lisa Clancy resides in because she, her district is 95% incorporated. I wonder if Lisa Clancy has campaigned in her own district regarding implementing the same vagrancy code in her own backyard. It is sad to see people in need, but there is help available. Go to stlouiscounty.com and click on the Contact Us. Scroll down to Homeless Services, Homeless Hotline, Job Opportunities Hotline, or possibly the Human Services Department. The phone numbers of these services are listed beside the agency's name. A shelter is a much better solution than standing out in the cold or sleeping in the cold. It is also safer, because many times, these people are hampering traffic and sometimes endangering their own lives. It can be scary also to have people you don't know come up to your car wanting you to roll down your window. San Francisco and Los Angeles are prime examples when vagrancy laws are not enforced, reduced, or done away with. Their cities are a mess. It's a big health hazard and very costly to the community. I talked with Lisa Huntspon of St. Louis County Homeless Services, and she told me that our volunteers that go to locations where vagrants are standing, these volunteers go to these locations and try to get them help. This is a better solution than taking away vagrancy laws or diluting these laws, replacing the laws with new rules that have no consequences and infringing on the rights of others. Thank you.
Next Speaker, Christine Hessel.
Hi, I'm Christine Hessel. I'm from South County. It's an honor to speak to the members of the Council tonight. I'm an avid reader of history, especially American history. I feel that there are two major stains upon the history of our country, slavery and abortion. They're connected to each other in several ways. Both degrade the personhood of an entire group of people and reduce human beings to commodities to be used and/or discarded for the convenience of another person. Both are rooted in racism. In our country, slavery was limited to African-Americans, who were deemed as inferior. Planned Parenthood founder Margaret Sanger was a eugenicist who saw abortion as a means to improve the race by eliminating the, quote, "unfit." That included many minorities, and it's one reason why Planned Parenthood clinics are routinely located in minority neighborhoods. When Adolf Hitler systematically exterminated 6 million Jews, it was labeled the Holocaust. We have museums to commemorate the innocent people who were slaughtered so that we never forget. How do we handle the destruction of 61 million unborn children? That's 10 times the number that Hitler killed. Are there museums to remember them? Do we call it an American Holocaust? Do we call it an American Holocaust? No. We act as though it's out of sight, out of mind, and we euphemize it under the term "women's reproductive rights." Who are we kidding? I challenge you, each of you, each council member, to do the right thing for all people in this community, both born and unborn. You can put your money where your mouth is by refusing to accept campaign donations from groups like Planned Parenthood that literally have the blood of unborn children on their hands. But if that's too difficult, you could take a small step in the right direction by voting for Councilman Harder's resolution in support of Missouri Right to Life. It's never too late to do the right thing, however small. Thank you.
Next speaker, Renee Artman.
Good evening. My name is Renee Artman. I'm from Fenton, Missouri. County exec, county council members, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Tonight, I am here asking for your support of the pro-life revolution being introduced by Councilman Harder. This resolution is to thank the citizens of St. Louis County area for taking time out of their daily routine and attend the pro-life rally that occurs every year in Washington DC in January. This was the 47th March for the Right to Life and was attended by hundreds of thousands of people, all ages, who value life, young and old. This rally was the largest ever. The issue of life is not a Democrat or a Republican thing; it is something that all should believe in. Four years ago, my heart again was stolen by a boy. Two years later, another entered my life. When holding these precious babies, becoming a Mimi, I thought that my life was full, but my life became fuller with them entering in it. I am blessed and could never imagine my life without them. Life is not a choice; it is a right. We have the right to life. Each and every one of us can make a difference in this world, state, county, country, if only given a chance for life. Can you imagine your life without the people you love? They make a difference because they were given the right to life. I hope every one of you will support the resolution, thanking St. Louis County individuals for taking time out of their everyday life to go to Washington DC and to celebrate right to life, the right to make a difference. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Teri Pellic, 79, 24, East Jackshire, 63123. And I want to add after that, it's Afton and it's unincorporated St. Louis County. The reason I want to bring that into play is Resurrection Cemetery is having a builder. We in Afton welcome this builder, and we just want to make some tweaks to his plans, and we thought we could get maybe the county parks department to help us with some funds to surround this. It is McKelvey the builder. We have started with the Nine Mile Garden. That was a first for Afton, unincorporated. Why can we not be the first unincorporated Afton County to start climate control? To be the first in the county to do a climate control park-type thing, along with what the builder is wanting to do at the back of his complex with his natural habitat. I found out this evening from the builder, which I did not understand, that his town hall, which he had, which was very informative, that the property for the natural garden in the back will not be owned by the builder, but owned by Resurrection and maintained by another entity. Again, these homes are going to be very nice homes. They're going to back up to Tower T. I myself would not want to back up to a golf course and have these beautiful balls coming into much prettier homes. So, my thinking is to, behind the homes on Hirsch Green and New Hampshire, and some acreage behind the golf course, to buy that and make it a passive natural park. And, I mean, it's a one-way in and a one-way out, so you're going to have a lot of traffic through people's residence, regardless of sidewalks, you know, and bicycles and people back there fishing, you know. And once they are, I spoke with the builder, it's going to be a homeowners' association. Once the builder is done with that whole association and he's done and leaves the property, that association can do whatever they want. They can make their own rules, they can even put a gated community up there and keep everybody out, and then how are we going to get to this natural habitat? So, I'm asking the parks to try to consider some areas surrounding both properties and backing up, and that would alleviate a lot of the new problem and the old problems. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Xena Hackworth. I live in South St. Louis County, and I wanted to thank you, Councilman Harder, for your resolution. I am very pro-life. I have been attending the Pro-Life March for the last 15 years or so. I do a lot of research, and I discovered years ago that the abortion industry actually targets the black community. Margaret Sanger, the founder of Prime Parenthood, once wrote a letter and said in part, "We do not want word to go out that we want to exterminate the Negro population, and the minister is the man who can straighten out that idea if it ever occurs to any of their more rebellious members." Well, I am one of those more rebellious members. So, I also discovered years ago that we are 12% of the population, as far as black Americans in the United States, roughly 12% of the population, yet 38% of all abortions in this country are committed on black women, and that is a disproportionately high number. We and the African-American community are no longer at replacement rate. One other thing I want to leave with you, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, as you all know, current Supreme Court Justice, said in a New York Times interview, "Frankly, I had thought that at the time of Roe, when Roe was decided, there was concern about population growth, and particularly growth in populations that we do not want to have too many of." So, you can all can look that up. It was July 14th, I believe, of 2009, when sitting Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg used those words. Abortion was, became legal in this country for one reason and one reason alone, and that was to eliminate the black population. A little bit of research, you can check with the CDC and also with Guttmacher Institute as well, which is the research arm of Planned Parenthood. So, I go every year. I march because I love our children. We love children. We love babies, and we don't believe that children should be aborted, and every life has value. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Washington, and we live in West County. My address is 167, well, it's Lamp and Lantern Village, number 211, 63017. So, thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I'm wanting to address you on the vagrancy issue. I saw an article that was written by Julie O'Donoghue, talking about the St. Louis County looking to change panhandling regulations, and when I read through the article, I was concerned because, first of all, I travel all over the country a lot, speaking, and one of the things I notice when I'm in DC, I've been to San Francisco, California, Texas, all over the country, certain cities have a huge problem with migrants, people who are homeless, they live in tents. They aggressively panhandle. It makes it very unpleasant for people who are traveling with children or traveling by themselves as a woman to be in these cities and to move about freely. So, this afternoon, I attended the Committee of the Whole, where I learned that we too have an issue with this in St. Louis County, but it's kind of segregated down into South County and a little bit in North County, and so I haven't encountered it as much. Now, we have over 1,100 homeless or unhoused individuals, and that's per the Missouri Housing Development Authority, and they take a survey regularly to figure out how many people are homeless. And so, St. Louis County actually saw a 22% increase in sheltered homelessness and a 53% decrease in unsheltered homelessness. So, we have an issue that needs to be addressed. At this afternoon's meeting, I was really happy to see that law enforcement was represented and gave a lot of good information about how they deal with vagrants, migrants, and people who really aggressively panhandle women and children outside of businesses in South County. I am still concerned that I don't have a real temperature for how some of the members of the county council took that information. I don't want to see St. Louis County turn into a San Francisco, which is the poop capital of the United States. I don't want to see us turn into an Austin or a Baltimore, areas that are not fit for Americans to roam around in, places that literally resemble third-world places. This is America. And more specifically, to you, county council members, who are responsible, you are responsible to us, you've taken on this position, you're elected, and we really rely on you to do things and to take actions that will keep us safe and protect us. So, I'm asking you to remember that accountability. I actually propose that we have a task force to explore options to remedy the situation of homelessness in the county. I would volunteer myself to serve on that task force, and I would just leave you with this. About 21 years ago, when we'd been here about a year, I was checking our mailbox, and I afterwards went into the Einstein Bagel in the Central West End, where I was aggressively panhandled and screamed at before I emptied out all of the change in my purse into the hands of a woman inside the store. That is something that I would never want anyone else to have to go through, and I leave it in your hands to ensure that it doesn't. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Panet, and I live in unincorporated St. Louis County. I'm here to address the council about getting rid of the vagrancy laws. If you look around, I never seem to be disappointed with the petty politics that I think occurs way too often, if we're talking about state government, county government, doesn't really matter. When you go to these other cities, like someone else had just mentioned, we see tent cities and we see news programs and articles talking about the armpits that these cities are. So, I'm wondering if we're on a race to the bottom here in St. Louis County to get some good progressive politics flowing, to make us the actual hairiest armpit in the nation? I'm not quite sure. Bipartisanly, people oppose this. Bipartisanly. You look at any survey that's conducted, and Democrats don't want it, Republicans don't want it, and then it becomes, what do we do next after the tent city? So, when you're getting rid of vagrancy laws, you're talking about actually proposing tent city ordinances. That's what you're talking about doing here. And so, we have to say, why do we want tent cities here? Because that's really what you're talking about doing. So, as I've traveled to these other places, Austin, San Francisco, I also have been accosted by the homeless there, as other people, you know, and there's nothing you can do about it. Once they're there, the police, their hands are tied. I don't know why you would get rid of this tool unless all you're trying to do is some progressive agenda for no good reason. I don't know if it's then to build them housing. I'm not sure what it is, what the reason is. My suggestion is that if this actually passes, that then all the council people that do go along with this are held accountable, and that we go outside as the community, bipartisanly, Democrats and Republicans, and we sing kumbaya with our signs that says that this tent city was brought to you by Councilmember Lisa Clancy. To thank her, please call, dah dah dah. Because that's what needs to happen. If you really believe that this is so good, then you should want to stand by it. And I guarantee you, the people will want to stand by it. And I'm not just talking here. Once they drive by it and they see somebody instituted this policy for no good reason, but to put a tent city there. Also, progressives are so great about talking about, you know, privilege. So, I don't know what kind of wealth privilege you think this is, but if you just institute this on St. Louis County, the unincorporated St. Louis County, that means all the munis are immune to this. So, that's the worst kind of privilege. That's wealth privilege. So, it's saying the least of these are going to have to live under these policies.
Your time is up. You're going to need to wrap up.
But not the wealthiest. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kate Stratton from unincorporated St. Louis County. I brought a few pictures of just-
Tent cities.
Ma'am, bring that to me. Thank you. I'm here against the vagrancy laws being removed. I'm just going to talk about a few cities that have removed them. In Seattle, they said about 100 people are responsible for 3,500 crimes, and they're released from the jails the same day that they are picked up. In Austin, which, one of those pictures, in front of one of the stores, they passed their laws in June of 2019 to remove ordinances of panhandling, and now people are engaging in aggressive confrontation. Camping was no longer illegal in public spaces. Let's see. Business owners and residents in Austin's increasingly upscale downtown have not been quiet about their fears. The owner of that Royal Blue Grocery, he said that homeless people used to say, "Sorry, I'll move if you would scatter them around." Now, they're saying, "Screw you. I'm staying here because I have rights." In Denver, in May of 2019, they actually put this up for a vote in Denver, and 19% of Denver residents voted for Trump. So, this is not a Republican or Democrat issue. 83% voted against removing vagrancy laws. So, I just feel like, you know, nobody is really for this. We need to keep laws on the books to help our police officers and keep vagrants off the streets, you know, and I think you need to look, too, at the infrastructure behind before you take off laws, and how can we help the homeless? Because there are so many opportunities to help homeless here in St. Louis, and I just feel like removing these laws would not be any benefit to anybody in St. Louis. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a few things to mention. Prosecutor Wesley Bell came before the council last year for the first time. One issue I brought up had to do with all the tax money in the area that was unlawfully spent to promote ballot proposals. This is mostly done by cities and school districts. Almost every school district in this area violates the law. Last year, I filed complaints with the Missouri Ethics Commission against the University City Public Library, its director, Patrick Wall, and a group aligned with the library called Friends of the University City Public Library. They were all engaged in running a full-fledged campaign for a 49% property tax increase proposal for the library that was on the April ballot. There were yard signs, campaign materials purchased and produced, mailings, meetings held to promote the tax, the library's website was used to promote the tax, and the library paid for a survey that was clearly designed to promote the tax also. Altogether, I estimate $30,000 to $40,000 was spent on the campaign for the tax hike, but no campaign finance report was ever filed. The Ethics Commission fined the Friends Group $1,100 last year, and this month, they also fined the library and Patrick Wall $1,100 also. But I think the library director and a board member should pay back what was unlawfully spent to promote the tax hike. I have asked prosecuting attorney Wesley Bell to seek to have the funds reimbursed to the library. Bob McCullough did nothing while elections were regularly corrupted. We will see if Mr. Bell will do something about the unlawful spending or continue with the do-nothing policy of his predecessor. Also, there are- Also, there are more disputes about Proposition P money. It was a bad proposal from the beginning, and it was terribly drafted. I pointed these things out at the committee meeting that was held for the proposal, but no one wanted to listen. None of the Police Officer Association people were there, but the chief was, and he went along with the language. Regardless of what anyone thinks, the funding for Prop P can be used for public safety. Since it isn't defined in the ordinance, that can mean just about anything, including potholes. The language of an ordinance is what controls it, not what someone thinks it was for. The Normandy Golf Club has closed and is looking for an operator for the golf course. Maybe the county parks department should submit a proposal. If the county can send hundreds of millions of dollars to downtown St. Louis for various stadiums and boondoggles, it should be able to operate and improve a golf course in Normandy. It would benefit people in the neighborhood, in the neighborhoods surrounding the golf course and beyond. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next speaker, Michael Burton.
Hey, Michael Burton here. Good to see you guys. I think we need to all ask ourselves, how much do we value green space? How much do we value trees? How much do we value wildlife? As you probably know, McKelvey Homes finally released their proposal in Afton and also held a town hall with the community. There's part of me that's happy with this plan. There's part of me that's not happy with this plan. But I will say, I'm more happy with it than not happy with it. But me personally, I still am just not there. I want to be clear, I am so happy and grateful with what has happened to Tower T. But how could we just walk away now? How could, how could we say, "Yeah, we got Tower T, and so all of the green space and wildlife above it, go ahead and tear it down"? You know we can't do that. Things that we were looking at. A developer that saves some green space, we got that. A developer that cares about wildlife, we got that. A developer that has listened to the community, we got some of that, too. Saving green space above Tower T? And I just get stuck. It's not there. It's not there at all. And you know, I came here and I showed you this map, I gave it to all of you months ago. And what's the most important thing? For not just me, this isn't about me, this is about most of the residents that I've spoken to. Green space above Tower T. And it's just not in their current plan. And I wish that it was. But I have confidence that we will find something that's good for everyone, and I hope you are all willing to consider these options. I do, on the other hand, want to thank McKelvey Homes, big time. They have been working with the Missouri Department of Conservation with Aaron Schenk, who I told them about months ago, and what they want to do on this floodplain over there, they didn't have to do that, and I'm incredibly grateful for them to, for trying to do what is right. I want to thank them for holding their town hall meeting, I want to thank them for taking our questions. Since 2017, person after person came here and spoke to you about Tower T, and one of the biggest points that was brought up was the space and wildlife above Tower T.
Michael, you're going to need to wrap up.
I am still hearing the same concerns. As far as some of the other positive things the developer has put forward, it only makes sense if the guaranteed, if it is guaranteed to be enjoyed by all. Let's keep talking, let's keep striving for what's best for everyone in St. Louis County. Thank you all, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Andy Hoff. Next speaker, David Stokes.
Thank you, members of the council, Mr. County Executive. I'm not going to take up my full time in order to maximize the time for a few speakers behind me. David Stokes, Executive Director, Great Rivers Habitat Alliance, we're an organization entirely focused on floodplain and wetlands preservation, and I'm here tonight in strong support of Council Bill 14, which is on the agenda for final passage. This bill, as my friend Kevin spoke earlier, he talked about the Army Corps of Engineers is having a series of meetings right now, and they're talking about sort of a basket of changes, options that can be made by cities and counties in the region. And of all those things that can be done under the National Flood Insurance Program and the related floodplain code, really by far the most important is to make this change in the water height surcharge, to change it from one foot, so what then the developer in the floodplain can solve their flooding issues by simply moving water onto their neighbors up to, up to a foot of it, reducing it down to no rise, or much more commonly, one inch, which is what this bill does. And I commend Councilmember Trakus for introducing it and to all of you for putting your names on it as well. Obviously, St. Louis County, with the recent wonderful choices by the TIF Commission and this county government, deserves great aplomb for what it's done for floodplain management, the TIF commissioners appointed by the county executive, and I think this would be an incredibly important next step to reduce, if you want to do one thing that truly reduces future flooding in our region, this Council Bill 14 is that step to make. And with that, we've got some friends of mine, elected officials from Jefferson County here, who are here to talk about what, why they did this in Jefferson County, and how it will truly benefit the region even more when more cities and counties join them. Thank you.
Next speaker, Renee Reuter.
Hi, my name is Renee Reuter, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to invite one of the other council members from Jefferson County to join me, just to maximize your time. My name is Renee Reuter, I'm on the county council in Jefferson County. This is Charles Grotke, who also is on the county council for Jefferson County. Now, we've both served on this council for many, many years, and until 2016, we didn't really see a whole lot of flooding. But since 2016, it's really been a problem. We are just, my district is just south of St. Louis County, right across the Merrimack River, and some of the things that I've witnessed in some of these floods is horrendous. When I talk about floods to a lot of people, they say, "Well, these people shouldn't be pitied because they moved into an area that floods." But the problem is, many of these people didn't move into an area that floods. They lived in an area that had not flooded for 20 years or more. And all of a sudden, because of this one-foot rule, because one person raises the levels by one foot, then the next person raises it by one foot, before you know it, it's, the water level is above their house. And we've seen that in Fenton. And it's terrible to see what this does to a community. So, Jefferson County passed an ordinance, much like the floodplain ordinance that you have in front of you, that reduces the rise from one foot to one inch. And we did that because we want to be good neighbors. And I'm so happy to see that you also want to be good neighbors, because you're right across the river from us. There was a fear that we would be the only ones who would do this, and now we know that there's not. And I know, Councilman Trakus, thank you for introducing this. Thank you for all of you who signed on as cosponsors to this bill. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "It's always the right time to do the right thing," and I'm so happy to see that you're doing that. Mr. Grotke?
Well, I thank you for the time this evening, I won't beleaguer you with all my comments, but I think it's a good thing that we do this. My district abuts the Mississippi River, and we have a lot of tributaries to my district that suffer from flooding. So I support this amendment to your regulations fully, as do the members of the Jefferson County Council. And we were the first county in the state of Missouri to adopt this type of regulation, and we hopefully, that your council will see fit to pass it also. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Bob Boyer.
My name is Bob Boyer. I'm currently the county assessor in Jefferson County. Before that, I was county councilman in Jefferson County, representing the Arnold District. I would concur with Mr. Stokes and my former council colleagues. I was a councilman in Arnold when we had two major floods in 15 and 17. The FEMA representative called that a Katrina-like disaster for Jefferson County. Floodplain management is very important. I'm a professional land surveyor, been there for 15 years before becoming assessor, and I can just tell you, I practice in St. Louis County. This will be a benefit to your, to your county and developments in the future. So I would appreciate your support on that bill. Second thing I want to talk about is Bill Number 5, 2020, on your agenda. I want to appreciate Mr. Fitch and Trakus and Harder putting forward a vote of the people to ban red light and speed cameras in all of St. Louis County. Jefferson County was the first county in Missouri to ban red light cameras in 2011. I'm proud to say I supported it, along with Ms. Reuter, Mr. Grotke. And Jefferson County is still here, nobody's died, nobody's fallen apart, it's still here. And one thing it has done is reduced the revenue that municipalities get from fleecing people from these speed traps, essentially. As a matter of fact, American Traffic Solutions literally lost money after the bill was passed, so they pulled their cameras, and there was just like poles sitting there in Arnold with nothing on them. So, I mean, I would appreciate you guys voting that to give the people a chance to vote in November on that bill. My final thing I want to talk about is a little story for you. Back in 1981, my mother went to the doctor, and she had to make a choice because she had some major health issues and she was pregnant. And the doctor said, "Well, ma'am, you know, we can't guarantee that she'll survive the birth of your child, so therefore you should probably have abortion performed on that child." My mother chose life, she chose to love me unconditionally, and she chose to risk her life as opposed to, you know, have the abortion. 38 years later, I'm standing here in front of you as the county assessor and councilman and husband, father of three kids, and I think pretty successful. The point of that story is, you never know what God will have planned for that young baby, that unborn baby. And, you know, we just need to trust God and what his plan is. And so I appreciate the support of Councilman Harder and all the people that go to Washington, DC to support the March for Life, because it is a very important thing. It is a travesty what we do to our unborn children. So, thank you very much.
Final speaker, Lynn Labob.
Dear council members, my name is Lynn, I'm from Afton, 9701 Irene Place, and I'm here tonight to speak to the need of a vagrancy bill that will keep our neighborhoods safe and treat vagrants with dignity. The number of panhandlers in the area continues to increase, including my exit at 55 and Revis Barracks Road. It's not unusual for me to see up to three working that exit. Sometimes one stand is standing there, or two, while one may be sitting on the ground and are running up underneath the bridge. There appears to be intoxication and drug use related to those working this exit, despite the national crisis communities are dealing with as it relates to vagrancy. I believe we should set an example by peeling the layers away of this crisis, so we can see the real solutions here. Obviously, the high volume of those who are choosing, choosing to live a life on the street are part of the broken culture that we live in today. It's a culture and crisis that is not going to go away anytime soon. So that is why it is imperative not to kick the can down the road any longer. Most of you sitting up there probably were exposed to church, family, community, morals, and rules. Those exposures have enabled you to fulfill your desires in life as they relate to relationships, work, family, and community. This next generation has had a much different upbringing. Gone are the days that the majority of families are intact with two parents. Gone are the days that neighbors had permission to make sure kids in the neighborhood stayed in line. I was one of those. We have taken God out of our schools and out of the public square. Morality is in decline, and our culture reflects that. So what are the solutions? First off, you are charged to keep law and order, that's your jobs, in our communities. Those who are addicted to heroin, living under our bypasses, earning money at our intersection is not order. Just recently, this past month, an Afton man who was very involved with the homeless community was stabbed to death by a homeless man at his home in Afton. I do not understand you also are charged for, I do understand, sorry about that, I do understand you are also charged for caring for all those in your jurisdictions, including the broken. The county website under Health and Wellness illustrates programs you offer.
Ma'am, your time is up, you're going to need to wrap up.
And I have no doubt the law enforcement makes the homeless aware of these options. Next is important to make sure laws and programs are intended to truly help our families. For instance, the one qualifier of the new St. Louis County Affordable House Trust Fund program is that women must be unwed to qualify for resources. This is a similar policy to the HUD and other funded housing resources that dates back for decades. Have you ever thought to yourself how many young men, young men grew up without a permanent father figure and never observed a committed marriage because their unwed mother was too afraid to lose their housing resources? Have you ever considered the effect it has had on generation after generation of young men, black and white? So tonight, I would ask that you pass a law to keep the residents of unincorporated St. Louis County safe, that you would give boundaries to those who are broken and in desperate need of change in their life. Leaving them on the side of the road, one hit from an overdose is not showing care for them. Vagrancy in 2020 is a bigger problem than all of us. So I encourage you to join me this year in praying that you, as a community, would have wisdom for real things.
That concludes the public forum, please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill Number 30, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, in ordinance, transferring $379,433 from the Department of Information Technology to the Department of Administration for support of customer service 3-1-1 operations, transferring $474,660 from the Department of Planning to the Department of Administration for support of the Division of Performance Management and Budget, and appropriating and setting apart the sum of $71,000 from the unappropriated balance of the General Revenue Fund for support of the Department of Administration. Bill Number 31, introduced by Councilmember Harder, in ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a lease with Nestle Turina Pet Care Company for lease of real estate located at Spirit of St. Louis Airport. Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, in ordinance, amending Title VII, Chapter 716, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended, Petty Offenses Code by repealing and reenacting Section 716.080 and 716.090 pertaining to prohibition of certain acts of solicitation. Madam Chair, those are the bills.
Thank you. Please proceed with perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill Number 20 is held.
Bill Number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, in ordinance, amending Chapter 1210, Title 12, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended. Regulations for bicyclists by repealing and reenacting Section 1210.050 pertaining to riding bicycles on roadways, and amending Chapter 1212, Title 12, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended by adding and enacting a new Section 1212.200 pertaining to vulnerable road users.
I move for adoption of substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 385. There's a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 385 is adopted. I move to perfect substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 385.
Second.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Trakus.
I believe that pursuant to the Roberts Rules of Order, which you so graciously arranged to have distributed to each member of the- to have distributed to each member of this council prior to a vote, it's appropriate to have discussion with respect to any motion. So at this point, I'd like to have a discussion regarding the proposed perfection of the subbill.
Is there a second?
Second. I don't think I need a second. I think pursuant to Roberts Rules, you have to allow discussion once the motion has been made and seconded, as it has in this case.
It's a provision. Okay, go ahead.
Councilwoman Dunaway's bill, even the substitute bill, is fraught with problems. Uh, I have taken her language and revised it and sent it to her. My understanding going into this tonight was that she was going to adopt the subbill but hold it pending a committee of the whole hearing, which is scheduled in this matter. Um, so I think it is premature to move to perfect this bill when a committee of the whole is scheduled for February 11th. There's no downside to holding this bill. Indeed, um, in all likelihood, there will be another substitute bill introduced either jointly by Councilwoman Dunaway and myself or individually by me. But the point is, there are, um, serious issues with regard to the language and the effect of this bill that need to be addressed before it moves forward. So I would suggest that the motion to perfect be withdrawn and the bill be held pending the, uh, committee of the whole.
I'm okay with that. So, would you like to make a motion to, or would you like to withdraw?
I'll withdraw the, uh, my motion to perfect the bill.
Okay.
And then I make a motion to hold the bill. The substitute.
Okay.
My second stand.
You don't need to vote on that unless there's any objection.
Bill, substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Three Eighty-Five is held.
Thank you. Bill Number Five, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Trachis, and Harder.
This is the red light speed camera bill, uh, that would take it to the voters to allow them to decide if they want to be governed in such a manner. There will be a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for Tuesday, so a week from today, at 3:30 to discuss this. So at this time, I move to hold it.
Bill Number Five is held.
Bill Number Fifteen, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill Number Fifteen.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Fifteen is perfected.
Bill Number Sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill Number Sixteen. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Sixteen is perfected.
Bill Number Seventeen, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill Number Seventeen. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Seventeen is perfected.
Bill Number Eighteen, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number Eighteen. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Eighteen is perfected.
Bill Number Nineteen, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number Nineteen. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Bill Number Twenty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number Twenty. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twenty is perfected.
Bill Number Twenty-One, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill Number Twenty-One. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twenty-One is perfected.
Bill Number Twenty-Two, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill Number Twenty-Two. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twenty-Two is perfected.
Bill Number Twenty-Three, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill Number Twenty-Three. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twenty-Three is perfected.
Bill Number Twenty-Four, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill Number Twenty-Four. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twenty-Four is perfected.
Bill Number Twenty-Five, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect Bill Number Twenty-Five. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twenty-Five is perfected.
Bill Number Twenty-Six, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect Bill Number Twenty-Six. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twenty-Six is perfected.
Bill Number Twenty-Seven, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill Number Twenty-Seven.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twenty-Seven is perfected.
Bill Number Twenty-Eight, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill Number Twenty-Eight. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twenty-Eight is perfected.
Bill Number Twenty-Nine, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Daze, Dunaway, and Walton Gray.
Um, we will be holding this bill this evening. There is a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 11th at four Final passage.
Bill Number Three Twenty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, I move to hold Bill Number Three Twenty. Bill Number Three Twenty is held.
Bill Number Three, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Please hold Bill Number Three.
Bill Number Three is held.
Bill Number Seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Seven is finally passed.
Bill Number Eight, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Eight. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Eight is finally passed.
Bill Number Nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Nine. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Nine is finally passed.
Bill Number Ten, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Ten. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Ten, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Ten is finally passed.
Bill Number Eleven, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of Bill Number Eleven. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Eleven, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Eleven is finally passed.
Bill Number Twelve, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Twelve. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Twelve, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Twelve is finally passed.
Bill Number Thirteen, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Thirteen, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Thirteen is finally passed.
Bill Number Fourteen, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
I, I've introduced this bill and I'm gra, grateful for the support of my colleagues unanimously in supporting this legislation. That said, over the last ten days or so, I've heard from any number of stakeholders, both inside and outside of county government, with respect to the impact of this bill. So I think, uh, I've spoken with the chair about this and, um, I think we agree that the right action here is to hold the bill and have a committee of the whole so allow these stakeholders to, um, express their concerns to the council before we take any final action. So with that, um, I'd move to hold the bill and would just, um, state that a committee of the whole has been scheduled on Bill Number Fourteen for February 18th at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Bill Number Fourteen is held.
Madam Chair, moving on to resolutions, we have five additional resolutions this evening. Resolution Number Two, introduced by Councilmembers Harder, Fitch, and Trachis.
Uh, please read.
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas the National March for Life, an annual rally to protest the practice of abortion, promote the value of human life, and advocate on behalf of unborn children, held its 47th march on January 24th, 2020. And whereas, established in October 1973, the first National March for Life was organized by the late Nellie Gray, a pro-life activist, as a response to the landmark ruling in Roe v. Wade, which legalized abortion in the United States. And whereas, held in January each year, the National March for Life has grown from a small demonstration to the largest pro-life event in the world, with hundreds of thousand attendees meeting at the National Mall and marching to the United States Supreme Court Building. Many from the St. Louis region traveled overnight aboard buses to arrive in time for the march to tell our government leaders and our nation that abortion must end. And whereas, the National March for Life strives to create a world where every human life is valued and protected and raises awareness of the effects of legalized abortion on the lives of wom, women and unborn children. Even though the total number of abortions is decreasing in the United States, more than 60 million legal abortions have occurred in the United States since 1973, affecting all races, nationalities, and genders, with an untold amount of physical and emotional damage to women from abortion. And whereas, on Friday, January 24th, 2020, approximately 3,000 St. Louis-area residents, ranging in ages from seven to 94, and from all walks of life, will travel again by bus, plane, car, and van to the National March for Life to peacefully show their commitment to the protection of life at all stages. And whereas, the National March for Life provides an opportunity for pro-life groups to unite around a common message of the importance and equality for every human life and work to communicate that message to government officials and members of the public in a peaceful, powerful way. And whereas, the National March for Life draws pro-life activists and leaders from many walks of life, and many pro-life events are held in conjunction with the rallies, such as candlelight vigils, prayer services, and conferences. In 2010, the nonprofit organization Americans United for Life created an online virtual march for people unable to travel to Washington DC. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows, Section One, in recognition of their devotion and dedication to life and to their continued pilgrimages to Washington DC, every January for the National March for Life, the St. Louis County Council wishes to recognize the St. Louis County pro-life community and to commend the Nat, National March for Life on the occasion of its 47th anniversary.
Madam Chair, move for passage of Resolution Number Two. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
While I don't support the premise of this resolution, I do support the council's right to support this, but I do have to vote no.
Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder.
A big aye.
Chairwoman, um, Clancy, on the Resolution Number Two, there are four ayes and three noes. I'm sorry. Pardon me. There are four noes and three ayes.
Resolution Number Two fails.
Resolution Number Three, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Trachis.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt Resolutions Numbers Three, Four, and Five. For the record, they are, um, resolutions honoring people honored by the Afton, uh, Chamber of Commerce for their annual awards.
Who made the second on that?
Mr. Harder.
Thank you.
I didn't hear it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Resolutions Three through Five, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Three, Four, and Five passes. Is it, are adopted.
Resolution Number Six, introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray, Daze, Dunaway, Clancy, and Trachis.
I move the adoption of order. Resolution Number Six.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Resolution Number Six, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number Six is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number one, Third District.
Uh, this is a, uh, request for legislation that would allow for a half a million dollar taxpayer expense to hire an architect to do needed work at Greensfelder Recreational Complex at Queenie Park. This is just the beginning of a program, uh, half a million dollars to start it. It'll be followed up by many millions of dollars of contracts that St. Louis County will let, uh, as a result of this project. So last week, before the council meeting started, I asked the Parks Director, Tom Ott, to go to the company who's been recommended to accept this bid, and that's Chiadini and Associates, to accept the contract, and ask them if they've been, um, made any type of campaign donations to any elected officials in St. Louis County for their political campaigns or their PAC. I think that's a fair question with the many millions of dollars that will be spent. So my response from Mr. Ott was, um, I believe you've asked me to do something that's beyond the scope of my job description and your authority as a council member. Therefore, I'm not going to do it. Now, I know Director Ott very well for many years, 30 years probably, this isn't how him and I communicate. So I have to assume that he was instructed to write this back to me. So my issue is this. Either we want to be transparent in county government and restore trust in county government, or we tell our councilmen and women, it's not in our authority to ask these kind of questions. So I will, at this point, uh, since this is still on the Third District unfinished business, drop this from the order of business until I get an answer to my question.
Moving on to new business, we have two prepared orders this evening.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Order one is adopted.
I move for the adoption of order number two.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number two is adopted. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, Madam Chair, I had, uh, mentioned last week about the information, and I hope all of you have received that information about the Police Commissioners. The next meeting is February 19th, 6:30, at the Hazelwood East Early Childhood Education Center on Parkage Run. And these should be in your email, uh, for the subsequent meetings. Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, um, I want to, I would be remiss if I did not express my profound disappointment in my Democratic colleagues this evening in their failure to support Resolution Number Two. And my disappointment is based on this. Time and again, in the three years I've spent here, resolutions have been brought, orders have been proposed, ordinances proposed by my liberal progressive colleagues. With respect to resolutions, in almost virtually every instance, despite personal disagreement, the Republican side of this council has supported those resolutions. Not because we believed in, in the premise, it was because we understood the need to hear, appreciate, and support a colleague's position on a non-binding resolution. That didn't happen here tonight. That bridge that we built in order to show solidarity likely was burned down tonight. And, um, that's disappointing, profoundly disappointing. And so, uh, I appreciate Councilwoman's Gray, Councilwoman Walton Gray's expression of understanding, but, uh, sometimes we have to step up and do what's right. And I think tonight, it would have been appropriate for my Democratic colleagues to support, um, Resolution Number Two. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Need everyone to be seated, please. Councilman Harder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chairwoman, I too am speechless, and I'm not one to not be speechless. I thought this would pass, and it didn't. And it says a lot, and it says a lot for this council and going forward. And we tried, we spent last year building bipartisan bridges on this council, and I guess those bridges have fallen apart. So I'm disappointed. I appreciate the people that came this evening to give support to this measure. I thank you for your time and your effort going to DC. We need that, and we need that type of activism for the babies of our community. I am a newly, new grandfather of about six months now, and will appreciate and have always appreciated the young ones that cannot defend themselves in our community, and those that are even more defenseless, those in the womb. So I'm disappointed, but I thank you for your witness, and I thank you for your witness in Washington, DC, to others that may get your message.
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Last week, I asked for a, if we could schedule a committee of the whole to talk about Prop P and what the status is of that fund. Has there been a decision on? I have received no answer from the Director of Administration on that request. Have we heard, have you heard anything as the chair?
I, on the request for what? To have a committee of the whole hearing?
Yes, to discuss the Prop P fund and what's going on with the balance, where it's going in the future, all of that.
There has not been a consensus to have a committee hearing about this issue. I have been recommending that folks talk to the Budget Director and the Director of Administration about this issue, and I encourage you to do that. I spent some time with the Budget Director on Monday to walk through it, and at this point, it's not clear to me that there is a necessity for a committee of the whole hearing on this issue.
So you did talk to him, and he alleviated your fears about the fund balance being over budgeted?
I got some really good information.
And nobody else wants it, or he wants to have this conversation seven times?
I leave it up to each of you to figure out how you would like to have a conversation with them.
So no committee of the whole or no further discussion publicly?
Not this time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Harder.
I would like to make a motion that we have a committee of the whole dealing with the Prop P.
Second.
Motion's been made.
All in favor?
Aye.